All right. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Township of Howell's Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, August 19th, 2021. Eileen, can you please do the roll call?
For Mr. Bovai? Mr. Bovai, are you there?
Paul, can you hear us?
Mr. Bovai, can you hear us?
I just sent them a text.
All right, let's get Mr. Dorado.
Here.
Chief Kudrick is excused. Mr. Leggio? Mr. Nacastro? Councilwoman Richmond? Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Ms. Casper?
Here, and I apologize. For some reason, I can't start my video.
Mr. Cristiano?
Here.
Chairman Tana House is excused, and Chairman Huster?
Here. Do we have a quorum?
Yes, you do. As six members, I mean, Mr. Bovair has to, he just muted himself.
Paul, can you hear us? Can you use a hand signal that you could hear us? We don't hear you.
He's not responding at all.
Can you raise your hand up, your right hand up if you could hear us?
Two, three, four.
Well, there's six members. That's a quorum.
Yeah, but he's not really responding.
Yeah.
I know my computer keeps cutting in and out as well.
Yeah. I mean, five at a bare minimum is what you need to start. That's a quorum. Oh, he's connecting now.
Hold on. Paul, can you hear us? Can you give us a thumbs up if you can hear us? He, I can't see.
I'll get my buzz on the phone.
All right, let's just give it a couple of minutes to see if we can get Paul on.
Paul just said it hung up on him twice, so he's trying again. He's going to restart his phone. Give it another minute or two, I guess.
If we could start with five, do you want to just get going?
Right.
Are we okay with that, Steve?
Five is a quorum.
All right, let's get it going, and hopefully Paul dials in. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance first and foremost. I'd like to take a moment of silence after the Pledge of Allegiance. Unfortunately, a past member of the Howell Township Planning Board, Mr. Tom Boyle, passed away on August 5th. He was also a member of the New Jersey State Planning Board, so I'd like to have a moment of silence after the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Eileen, do we have any approval of minutes?
There are no minutes to approve this evening.
Okay, are there any vouchers?
We have no vouchers.
Any correspondence?
We received a letter from Ryan Farrell, Attorney for McDermott and Son LLC, who received preliminary and final major subdivision approval from the board via resolution memorialized on April 15th, 2021. Copy of the letter was sent to all board members yesterday. During the hearing, the applicant supplied exhibits to to the board for six one-story residential dwellings with one car garage assessed via a paved driveway on the subject property. The applicant is now considering building two-story dwellings on the property or making modifications to the current houses based upon requests from the possible buyers. On July 20th, 2021, the contacted the board engineer who did not believe the resolution or ordinance restricted the applicant from building two-story homes, but she deferred to the zoning officer. On August 4th, 2021, applicant Kevin McDermott spoke with Mr. Howard, Director of Community Development, and Mr. Howard said he spoke to the board attorney Ron Caccero, and it was in his opinion that the resolution did indeed prohibit the applicant from construction two-story dwellings on the subject property. The applicant is respectfully requesting that the board amend the resolution to remove the restrictive language.
Is he here, the applicant? Because, because he, so Steve, I'm going to just jump in, and then you can correct me for whatever I'm saying isn't correct. The applicant's team during the hearing represented that the homes would be one-story. That went into the resolution. Because the resolution basically says it's based upon the testimony provided. They provided that testimony. That was not something that the board required, but they offered that in the affirmative during their testimony. If they want to modify their testimony, they should come back to the board and amend their application. They themselves are the ones that said these were going to be one-story homes. That had nothing to do with us. But the resolution says, and Steve, you can correct me if I'm wrong, based upon what was provided through testimony is the applicant is held to what they provided during testimony. They provided that testimony. We didn't require it. They provided it. So if they want to amend it, they should come back to the board, provide notice to the people around them, and then they should amend their application to be two-story homes. That was something they provided to us.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to second what Jennifer just said. One of the issues is that the plans that were submitted, if I remember, the architectural elevation showed single family, so that was what their application was, and the resolution says, subject to whatever was the plans that were submitted or approved by the board. So the only way, the proper way to do this is to come back for the board on an amendment on notice and change the approval.
What is the process to do that? Because I'm getting mixed.
You have to file an amended application and come back to the board for an amended application.
It would be the same docket number, just Eileen would add an A after it.
But you would have to file an amended application. You would have to renotice. You would have to submit revised plans, and then you would have to come back to the board.
One of the things that she didn't read in that letter, which was there, I believe, was there's no changes at all to the
It doesn't matter. This is the application that you presented, and you noticed. If you want to amend the application that you presented and you noticed, you have to amend that application. That's, like, we did not impose that condition on you. You created that condition on yourself. So if you want to amend it, you have to file an amended application with the board and then wait to get onto an agenda, renotice, and then come back to the board to amend your application.
This is Ryan Farrell. I'm the attorney for Mr. McDermott and McDermott and Son. I just wanted to note for the record and clarify something. I mean, nothing that Mr. McDermott is proposing would require any kind of variance relief, and I believe that correspondence stated that he wouldn't seek any kind of variances going forward.
That's great. So that would make your amended application that much easier to get through the board. You made an application with a one-story product. That was not our application. That was you. You want to amend it, come back and amend it. But you're not going to get me to convince this board to give you an administrative okay to move forward with the product that you did not present to the board and was not noticed to your neighbors. You noticed a one-story product to your neighbors. That was what was on file. If you want to amend that, amend it, but you have to come back and amend it appropriately. So my recommendation to this board is to tell Mr. McDermott and his attorney, if they want to amend it, it should be a pretty easy process, but they're going to have to amend the application and make the application to the board.
And does that have to go through, like, engineering and everything? Because we're not making any changes to the engineering.
You're going to have to submit it to us. We're going to review it. Jordan's office is going to review it. You're going to come back to the board at a public hearing, and we're going to have a hearing on it. Yes. Otherwise, you are free to exercise your right to build the product that you had represented to the board during the subdivision application.
Yeah, it's going to be different.
That, you'll have to come back to the board to amend your approval.
Even though there's no variances, and I would just build
No variance, because that's the product that you proposed when you came to us.
It was misadvised, I'm sorry. I had no idea that there was going to be limited to that.
I'm sorry about that, but that is what it is. That's what got noticed. That's what your neighborhood was made aware of, and people didn't come because maybe they didn't care, but maybe a two-story product would make people upset. So you're going to have to renotice, amend your application, submit plans, and go through the process.
All right. And that's the consensus of the board?
Yeah, I mean, we rely on our board.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I mean, that's the proper legal way to do it.
But legally, I would build houses within the framework of your
Enough. We've told you our opinion. You can choose to build the product the way you came to the board and proposed it, or you can amend your application. But we're not going to, like, this is not a public hearing, and we have applicants waiting in the waiting room, so like, we're this is my recommendation to the board, and what they said, this is the direction that they're going. So you can choose whatever remedy you choose to move forward, but this is where we're going.
Okay, thank you.
Would we be so kind as to get a written citation? It's just a written legal opinion, so we have it for future reference. Just kind of memorializing what was just said. We just want to avoid this in the future and have a record.
I mean, we're not having a public hearing, so I mean, I don't understand the, we're not offering legal opinions. There's not a public hearing, so it's not like the board is making a formal decision. It's just what Jennifer just described is just kind of the black-letter law. If something's approved, what was represented before the board is what needs to be approved, what needs to be constructed. And if there's material modifications to what was represented, it has to come back. If it was something where, for example, you're changing the type of light fixture or sconce on a building, perhaps that could be dealt with administratively, but you're changing the structure. And I was the attorney for this application. I remember watching it, and I do remember the architect testifying about their single-family homes, and he showed a rendering, and that was a big feature of this application, that it was single-family. I mean,
Yeah, nobody's denying that. I was just saying, you know, because, I mean, we just want to know, you know, what legal there was this representations made. I just want to have it in writing. That's all I was asking.
Yeah. There's a case, Ferraro, I think is the name of the case, that if you, if something is represented before a board, even if it's not specified in the resolution, the applicant's bound by it because he represented it.
Okay, would you mind sending me that?
I'm not giving legal opinions, or you have an attorney that could do that for you?
I'm an attorney. I'm Mr. McDermott's attorney.
So you can give him a legal opinion? You're not asking the board to give you a legal opinion?
I'm not asking, I'm asking the basis for what you just said. That's all. It's okay.
Because several legal scholars, you know, will say that if, as long as I'm building within the requirements of
Mr. Chair, I think we've beat this
Yeah, I agree.
Like, let's just move on.
Yes, I agree. We've given our piece, and we're all in agreement.
Yep.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Eileen, we have another set of correspondence, I believe, in reference to the ordinance O-2127 for the sidewalks.
Yes, the board secretary also sent out ordinance 21-27 amending Chapter 188 land use, Article 14, Residential Design Standards, Section 132, sidewalks of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of Howell, which was introduced by the council at their meeting on Tuesday, August 17th, 2021. This ordinance is scheduled for a public hearing and adoption at the September council meeting, so the board needs to discuss it and comment on whether it's substantially consistent with the master plan.
So, Mr. Chair, I just want to interject, and I'm sure Steve has information as well, but I would submit that this is consistent with the master plan in terms of circulation and safe pedestrian access. So I would submit that I would request that the board act affirmatively on the ordinance, saying that it is consistent with the township's master plan.
As the board is aware, having done master plan consistency reviews, when an ordinance is introduced and adopted on the first reading, it's referred to the planning board for a master plan consistency review. The board's job is to advise the mayor and council whether there's any inconsistencies with the master plan. Jennifer just described that this ordinance is completely consistent with the master plan. So the mayor and council should be apprised of that finding so that they could then proceed to their second reading and public hearing on this ordinance.
Jen, I have a question on this, and I read it, and I don't know if it's a question as far as, is it, does it fall in the realm of consistency with the master plan? And if this is outside of that, I apologize.
Sorry.
But the way I read it is, I guess it's subsection C, which is the addition, is upon granting the waiver, so when, for instance, an applicant comes, the board waives that they have to construct sidewalk on the site, correct? So upon the wavering, they're then required to pay into the Township of Howell's sidewalk fund, quote unquote. Is that correct? Okay, so I guess my question on consistency with the master plan is if a site, for instance, is going to be constructed on, let's just say, Route 33, where a mile in one direction, a mile in another direction, doesn't have sidewalks, and we say, you know, they shouldn't be the poster child to construct sidewalks because it just doesn't make sense. Are they still required to pay?
Yes, and the theory is this, the township has a sidewalk fund. So while they're getting a waiver to provide sidewalk at that particular location that you find inappropriate, they're paying their fair share, and perhaps the township at a later date can put sidewalks there or has the ability to connect sidewalks elsewhere in town. So, so, the, so the, the short answer is yes. People that request a waiver, and I think Matt is around, because I think we were exempting out Matt, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, like, minor subs.
Right.
Because, you know, that, that's a pretty onerous cost. But, for example, we had an application come before the zoning board for a major, for all intents and purposes crap show, and yeah, we're, you know, we don't really see people walking on 30 or 33, but they should not be exempt from providing for pedestrian safety. And so this, what this does is that it provides an absolute calculation on what the cost would be. They pay into the sidewalk fund. Let's say the town is looking to create a safe route to school situation, and there's a section that is missing. It doesn't come on the backs of the taxpayers. There's money in this fund that can complete the sidewalk network elsewhere. That's what the, that's what the goal is.
Understood. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, do I have a motion from anyone on the board?
I'll move that it's consistent.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Rob. We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bovai?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
And Chairman Huster?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I believe that's it with correspondence, Eileen.
Yes, correct.
Great. We'll move on to resolutions. First resolution is for case number SP-1081 Cabin Realty LLC, the Resolution of Granting Preliminary and Final Major Site Plan with Ancillary Variance Relief. Eligible voters are myself, Mr. Seaman, and Ms. Casper. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
And Chairman Huster?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
And next on the agenda is for submission waivers. We only have one on the agenda tonight for case number SP-1088 for 4481 Route 9 LLC for a minor site plan. Eileen, I guess you got to let in counsel on this.
And while she's doing that, can I swear in Jordan? Where's Jordan? Jordan, if you can unmute. Jordan, do you swear from that any testimony provided before the board this evening will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you so much.
Eileen, who's representing this one?
I'm looking it up now. My apologies.
Okay.
Sal Alferi.
Good evening, everyone. Salvatore Alfieri on behalf of the applicant.
Good evening, Sal. How are you?
Very good. You?
Well.
This is, we're here for submission waivers. This is the old Gold's Gym. The applicant is seeking to convert the building to an office building. No site improvements are proposed, and that is why many of the checklist items we felt were not relevant to an application. We're not proposing any improvements. And we could go through them if you'd like, but I did discuss these. And she indicated she had no issues, but I'd defer to Jordan if he wants anybody to discuss them.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as Mr. Alfieri mentioned, this is the Gold's Gym site that they're looking to convert just the interior of the building only to an office space. We did have a number of waivers that we mentioned in our June 30th, 2021 letter. And as you mentioned, we don't have any, take an exception to the granting of these waivers, given that it's all interior to the building, and there's no site application portion of this. It's all interior.
Thanks, Jordan. Members of the board, any questions on this one? Seeing none, I will take motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
So we have Paul and Joe. Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Bovai?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
And Chairman Hauser?
Yes.
Thank you all. Good night.
Thanks, Sal. Good night. In the essence of time, we are going to change the agenda a bit for the applications. We have two this evening. The first we are going to hear is case number SP-1079F41 Kent Road LLC for the finer, final major site plan. Again, this is just for the essence of time, as they are coming in only for final major site plan. They've been here before us. Eileen, can you let in the folks for this application?
Yes. Mr. Cohen, would you like anybody else in the meeting?
Yes, if you could let in Charles Vermont and David Feldman.
Sure.
Thank you.
If Charles Vermont can unmute himself and turn his video on, I'd like to swear both Mr. Vermont and Mr. Feldman in. Charles, if you can hear us, can you unmute yourself and turn your camera? You unmuted yourself. If you have camera, that would be great.
Charles, you there?
Mr. Vermont, can you hear us?
I'm here. Apparently my camera's not working.
Okay, so we'll swear. When Mr. Feldman and Mrs. Vermont, could please raise your right hands? Do you gentlemen both swear in firm or swear or affirm that any testimony provided before the board this evening will be the truth?
I do.
I do.
Thank you so much. Is your application?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. On May 13th, the Planning Board granted preliminary site plan approval with certain waiver and variance relief to 41 Kent Road LLC for the construction of a three-story office building and related improvements. We're here tonight seeking final site plan approval. The applicant submitted revised plans, addressed the conditions of preliminary, specifically the issue of the fire lane that was in the chief's report. We received a letter from CME of July 12th. We reviewed that. There's just a couple discussion items which we're prepared to address. Like I said, Mr. Vermont, as the engineer for the project is here, Mr. Feldman as the architect. Those were the two comments. We're here to make a very brief presentation and ask for your final approval.
Thank you. So Todd, who do you want to hear from first on this?
I guess Charles. Chad, Chad Vermont.
Okay.
He's been sworn. Chad, if you just want to put your credentials on the record once again, please.
Mr. Cohen, if I recall correctly, Mr. Vermont was previously qualified by this board last debate. So the board will, should continue its acceptance of his qualifications.
Chad, are you there? I don't know where he went. Oh, there he is.
Now, now we can't hear him, though.
Chad? No volume. I just lip read. He's working on it, he said. He's getting help.
Todd, you want to, you want me to briefly come on in the interim?
Sure, we don't want to keep the board waiting. There was a brief comment about what any changes were made to the facade of the building. David, I believe last time you made a full presentation, if you could just reorient the board.
Yeah, so last time we spoke in great detail as to the projections of the building, the facade of the building, the square footage, and all of its aspects. Since then, there hasn't been any modification to the footprint and/or the design the design that was proposed and discussed previously. So if the board has any additional questions pertaining to that, I'm here for, for some questions.
Mr. Chairman, the reason for this comment in our letter is because there was some discussion at the last hearing regarding the architecture. There was one waiver required that was granted for the preliminary approval. So while no changes were necessarily required at this time, we just asked them to discuss if they were planning to make any more changes, and it sounds like they're not, so.
Okay.
That, that is correct.
Chad, are you there?
I'm here.
No, not you, Jen.
Oh, sorry.
Let me see if I can get him on the phone. No. I may be able to talk. Yeah, I got an answering machine at the office. I think the only comment the board had with regard to the site plan issue was they wanted to make sure that we addressed the Fire Bureau comment. I know in discussions with Chad earlier today, they did relocate the building. They moved it. They did satisfy the comments. I believe there was a second report issued by the Fire Bureau on May twenty-fifth that they were satisfied with the the changes and had no objections.
Just to provide a little bit more background, the first hearing for preliminary approval, the major discussion item was regarding the drive aisle size and to make sure that the Fire Bureau will accept it. In the Fire Bureau's May twenty-fifth letter, they do accept the plans. The only comment remaining was regard to fire lanes. So I'm not sure if that's been addressed since then, but that's, you know, much more minor than the actual size of the aisles. So the only other test one I was looking for from the engineer was just to explain any changes they made to increase the size of the aisles.
Yes, they didn't. If I do that, it's on the plan. Like you said, the Fire Chief confirmed that. I think the only items left, like you said, with the fire lanes are the technical item, and we'll definitely agree to put those on a plan subject to their approval. I apologize for the technical problems our engineers having. I don't think there were any other engineering questions, though, that were raised in the letter.
Jordan, Jen, Shari, anything from the board?
I don't have anything else, just for Mr. Vermont to agree.
I have nothing, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Jen.
Just the applicant's team to agree to address all of our technical comments that we have. There's still a number of outstanding comments, but.
I did have that discussion with Mr. Vermont this afternoon, and he had no issue with that. We've already received, I believe, Monmouth County Board of Health, Free Hope Soils, and the Environmental Commission had no comments, and we're obviously now going to submit the DOT, and we'll get that to you when we get approved.
Mr. Vermont is still having technical difficulties. Couple seconds. Do any of the members of the board have any questions, comments on this one? Being none, Todd, I don't know if you have any other comments.
No, again, my apologies, but we would request final approval at this time if the board's comfortable.
Okay. All right, that being said, do I have a motion on from the board?
Are we waiting on Mr. Vermont for anything substantial?
I don't believe so, Rob. You know, it sounds like every, every comment is being satisfied in conversations, as long as that's being adhered to.
I would agree, Mr. Chair.
Which Mr. Cohen has stated, so, yeah, I think we're, we're okay.
Chairman, I mean, is it customary to offer at least some opportunity for public comment?
Oh, that's true. Yes, thanks, Steve. Yeah, if anybody from the public does have comment, Eileen, could you please make that open to, to public comment now? We'll wait a couple minutes to see if anybody's on for that.
Yes.
And I guess, you know, for members of the public, I believe it's just the raise your hand feature if you are on for this application. There's a little raise your hand feature. Just let us know by that.
I don't see anybody as yet.
Okay. I think everybody on is for the next application, so I'm going to close the public portion. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Paul. Second?
Yep. Second.
Second from Mr. Cristiano. Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Bovai?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado? Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
And Chairman Huster?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Okay, the last application for this evening is case number SP dash one zero seven eight for New Horizon Properties LLC. It's a preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary variance relief. Eileen, can you please bring on Mr. Pape, who I see in the wings?
Sure.
Good evening, Ken.
Good evening, Chairman and Board members. I, I'm in. Am I in?
You are in.
Yes.
It's not showing up on, it's not showing up on my screens. That's okay.
Mr. Pape, if you want to tilt your camera down a little bit, because we're seeing you from your nose down. That's better.
That's better.
Much better.
And I'm not showing up on my screen at all, so I don't. Wait, let me, oh, oh, I see what's going on. That looks terrible. Okay.
Mr. Pape, would you like anybody else in the meeting?
I do. I have a number of people who are interested and participating in the meeting. Felix Bruce Alofsky is the applicant. He is the managing member of New Horizon. Please admit Felix. And then the expert witnesses are Stuart Challoner and Scott Kennel and Julie Kobeski and Michael Testa. Thank you.
They're all in the meeting.
Thank you so much. And with permission, Mr. Chair, I have a, a short opening statement and then an introduction of the witnesses, and we have a succinct but a very fact-packed presentation for you. This application is a request for preliminary and final major site plan approval. We began the application, albeit very briefly, on, on June seventeen. At that time, we had some overviews of the application presented to you. It's a nine point one five acre property. It is located at the intersection of Route thirty-three and Colts Neck Road. It is currently improved with a gas station that operates twenty-four seven and a farm stand that has been inactive for the past year. Our clients are the owners of the property. They're proposing to develop this property, which is located in HD three zone, consistent with the zone. It is a retail center. It is at twenty-three point seven percent coverage where your ordinance allows seventy. So it's, it's not an intense development. And it is a building a little under thirty-three feet tall where the ordinance provides for forty-five. And the applicant is prepared to present the test, the, the application to the board initially by Stuart Challoner. When we were here the last time, he introduced the number of exhibits to get everybody oriented. I'm going to ask that he do that again this evening. It'll take just a moment. And then he took us through the site elements. The site has frontage on both roadways. We're very, very pleased that, that Julie Kobeski, a landscape architect with, with Malillo and Bauer, one of the really exemplary landscape teams, designed our perimeter landscaping. And Scott Kennel worked with me and with the Fire Chief to come up with a circulation plan, and he'll present that. And Michael Testa, our architect, has designed what we believe to be a very handsome building and appropriate and handsome signage, which will be presented to you. So with permission, Mr. Chair, Mr. Challoner was sworn on June seventeen. His credentials were made part of the record as both a professional engineer and a professional planner asked that he be allowed to begin where he left off, and I'll remind him that he's under oath.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Challoner, if you would, unmute yourself and join us.
Here.
So there, if you could, is screen sharing made available to Mr. Challoner, Eileen, or Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Challoner, ask if you could begin with the aerial, just to get everybody oriented. And we'll go right to your, your site plan rendering.
Is, is my screen up and running?
Yeah.
Okay, good. I, I always, I only get to see my screen. Good evening, board members. My name is, again, is Stuart Challoner. My office prepared the application that's being presented tonight. One of the people that prepared the application, there was many people involved. This property is located on the northwest corner of Colts Neck Road, which is a municipal road and a state highway Route thirty-three. This is a somewhat dated aerial photograph since the new development on the opposite side of Colts Neck Road is currently under construction. But if you look at this exhibit, which is entitled.
Mr. Challoner?
Yes, before you go on, I, I'm not seeing your screen.
Yeah, we're not seeing your screen. Oh. Okay.
Thank you.
Hold on. There we go.
There you go.
All right, great. So let me zoom out.
There we go.
Get rid of. There. All right. This is our first exhibit. This is called Overall Site Rendering. Preliminary and final major site plan for New Horizon Commercial Center for lot seventy-seven and seventy-seven point oh one. It is a, a Google image. Probably twenty, it might be twenty twenty. It's, it doesn't show the new improvements of the residential development on the opposite side of Colts Neck Road, but it does show the improvements of the quick check in the southeast corner of the intersection. It has the commercial site on the southwest corner of the intersection, and it shows the existing horse farm just to the north of our property on Colts Neck Road. Our property is being developed at the intersection. We are proposing a twenty-five, just over twenty-five or just under twenty-six thousand square foot retail center. One-third of that build or proposed building will be a new Dollar General. It will not be a standalone building. It will be integrated in the, the building. It will be an L-shaped building, so we'll have frontage on both streets, on Colts Neck and the state highway. There is a large portion of the property in the northwest corner that is going to be deed restricted for conservation. A large portion of that is wetland, so we are going to deed restrict that entire northeast corner of the property. And the applicant is proposing provide additional buffers to the adjoining horse farm to the, to the north. We have a second exhibit. We'll be zoomed in just a little tighter. This is the site rendering. I'll zoom in just into the title block, just so I can read it into the record. Site rendering, preliminary and final site plan, New Horizon Commercial Center, again for lots seventy-seven and seventy-seven point oh one, block one eighty-three, township of Howell. This is an updated rendering from our previous submission. This rendering is latest revision date is August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. This shows a close-up view of the proposed improvements. If I can just get it so it's in the screen for you. Again, it shows the proposed Dollar General store and the retail space that we're proposing. We have one hundred and forty-one parking spaces. We have the handicap spaces spread throughout the site to provide handicap access to all points of the development. We have two access points. We have a full or full access off of Colts Neck Road, which Colts Neck Road is a controlled intersection with a traffic signal. So we have an access in the, what would be the north quadrant of our property. And then we have a limited access onto the state highway. Because of the striping on state highway for the left-hand turn lane, we're limited to a right turn in, right turn out only, and that is being proposed on this property. Currently, this property has an existing gas station on the intersection, directly at the intersection of Colts Neck Road, and it has an existing farm market in the area where it says proposed retail space. All those facilities will be demolished. All the existing access into and out of those facilities will be removed, and then we'll have these proposed improvements, which will be a great improvement to the traffic flow for that intersection, moving all the, all the ingress and driveway access points that are in close proximity of the the traffic signal today will be redistributed away from that location. And do you want me to go right to the third exhibit?
I, I, I want to stop just for a second.
Okay.
So, Mr., Mr. Chair, Mr. Challoner has identified that there are wetlands on the property. I think that it's important to point out to all that the wetlands have been delineated. The wetland delineation is in place. Their location and character has been determined. I did not ask to admit, but with us this evening is Brian DuBois, the environmental scientist who handled all of that for us. If there are any questions about the wetland delineation, Mr. DuBois is here this evening. I did not plan on, on calling him. Also, I wanted, if, if you would, Stuart, if you could, that driveway that you have identified on Route thirty-three, I think it's important for the board to know that that driveway's location and that driveway's design were the subject of a pre-application meeting with the NJ DOT to make certain that the location and the restrictions that are shown on your plan were consistent with the Department of Transportation. If you could just confirm that.
Yes, that is correct.
Right. Before you take us through the elements of the site plan, I'm going to ask that you do so in detail. I want the board members to know that we have been to a number of municipal locations already. We have your shade tree commission's letter indicating no comments. And I have gone with this application to the Environmental Commission on two separate occasions, and I'm most pleased that the August letter issued by the Environmental Commission confirms no comments. And we have also spent time with Fire Chief Lewis. We have found Fire Chief Lewis to be very helpful in giving positive guidance. We also have found that when we follow his guidance, we get letters from him that says that he's, he's pleased with the design. And that happened here. He did want to make certain that we had fire hydrants in certain locations, and he wanted to make certain that we had fire lanes in certain locations. And Stu, if you could just jump in for a minute and say, yes, the fire hydrants and the fire lanes will be on the plans exactly as requested.
That is correct, and, and the aisle was, widths were increased per his recommendations.
And I think you also changed some of the radii around the back of the building.
That's correct, to allow the larger firearm vehicles.
All right. So I think it's important for the board to know that Mr. Bruce Alofsky and his company did undertake all of those responsibilities before we came before your board. Stuart, I'm going to ask if you could, we'll go through what I like to call the statutory elements of the site plan. I think we can do them succinctly. The. The, we can do grading and drainage together. Mr. Chair, when we were here in June, we had just received comments from Laura Newman's office advising us that the stormwater system that Stuart had designed did not meet with their, I'm going to say, pleasure. They had a better or a different type of stormwater design that they wanted to see. So it required eliminating the stormwater design and creating a new stormwater design. So we begin there and just briefly describe what was the changes that you were asked to do, and if you could confirm that you've done.
Sure. Let me just, I'll get the grading and drainage plan up on the plan for you, so.
Remember that grading and drainage is boring and only you engineers really are interested as you go through it.
Right. You hear that, Jordan? It's boring information. All right, so the original application had the two infiltration basins. Both located in the exact location where they're proposed tonight. But they had sand bottoms and it required infiltration for the water quality storm. Laura's office indicated they had a concern with infiltration basins function in this area. So they asked us to eliminate them as infiltration, make them dry basins. So we have done that, and our water quality now will be provided with these manufactured devices, which are new and improved per the new stormwater regs from the DEP. So we have new green infrastructure, pre-manufactured basins, there will be three of them installed along Route thirty-three for basin number one, and then will be an additional hydroponic outlet structure for water quality in basin number two. And then also the board's engineer asked that our systems be connected to the municipal system that's being proposed as part of the new development across the street on Coltsneck. And you'll see there is now a drainage connection system that goes out to Coltsneck Road and connects across the street with a new doghouse catch basin that will be constructed above the new drainage pipe that was just recently installed. And that really is the only change from the plan. It was originally submitted to meet those drainage provisions.
Stuart, may I ask, this system that you've designed, will you comfortably testify that it is consistent with Howell Township's stormwater ordinance?
Yes, I had several conversations with with Jordan regarding just this past Monday, based on his new review letter. What we're proposing does meet the new stormwater regs. And it will be compliant with the township's requirements.
Compliant with the township requirements, is it compliant with the state DEP requirements?
Yes, and as part of this project, since we border on a freshwater wetland location, our discharge points will be in the wetland. There is an existing man-made ditch along the edge of the old farm field that our basin number one will tie into. And because that's discharging the wetlands, it requires us to get a DEP stormwater discharge permit. So the DEP will review the entire storm drain system for this project. Since once you, once you put your foot in that door, they have jurisdiction over the entire project, so it will be reviewed by them and it will be compliant to the DEP requirements.
My final question is, is this, is it not an accurate statement that there is no burden on the township of Howell? This is a privately owned system that must be maintained by the property owner in accordance with an operations manual that is, I'm subject to the review and approval of the township engineer?
Yes.
We have a fully compliant system designed to be consistent with the guidance and direction from Laura Newman two months ago that creates no burden on the township.
That's correct.
If we could go to landscaping and lighting, I know that we have a feature landscape presentation from Julie Kobeski in a moment. But if you could describe the light, the perimeter along the roadways was the work product of Ms. Kobeski, but if you could describe the balance of the landscaping. And know that this board and the board's professionals want to hear that you have created full buffers where all buffers are required by the township.
All right. The landscaping plan from from both landscape architects. We originally started with our original landscape architect who did a site landscaping interior and the immediate perimeter around the building. That landscaping has been enhanced. The basins have been changed from sand bottoms to grass bottoms. And then there is a extensive landscaping scheme and streetscape along both Route thirty-three and Coltsneck Road. And all those have been enhanced in this final submission.
And would you, for the record, if you could confirm that the dimensions of the buffers required for separation between the adjacent farm are all on the plan and all meet those standards?
Yes, that's that's small area adjacent to the farm field that we're developing is just a small area in the northeast corner of our property, and it meets the fifty-foot buffer.
And.
The buffers are not compliant, correct?
When you say they're not compliant.
I mean, you need a variance for a buffer, correct?
Because of the access road for the drive.
You don't provide, okay, so right across Coltsneck Road is residential development. You don't comply with that, correct?
No, that is correct.
And across thirty-three, you don't comply with that, correct?
So I thought we were just talking about the farm at the moment.
No, I'm talking about, you like, I mean, I hate to criticize the presentation, but like, let's just call a spade a spade. Let's talk about buffering. So you comply with that one little smidgen, but you don't comply with the rest of the buffering, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
So, if I may, the next item is the lighting. And if you could describe the lighting scheme that is employed on this project.
We prepared a lighting scheme with LED lighting, pole-mounted lighting throughout the entire property, and all the lighting will be screened not to have light and shadow onto Coltsneck Road or directed to any residential portion. And then, of course, the proposed buffer on the northeast corner of the property, adjacent to the farm, all the lighting will be directed away from the farm.
And have you reviewed the technical comments of the board's professionals? Now, are you comfortable advising this board that you can and will meet their outstanding technical requirements?
Yes, completely, yes.
Now, Mr. Kennel will testify briefly in a few moments, but if you could describe the onsite circulation that's part of your site plan.
So again, again, the property will have two access points. The first full access will be on Coltsneck Road. It's located in the northeast corner of our property. That will be a full access. So people have the ability, when they exit the site, they'll be able to come to a controlled intersection with a traffic signal, so they'll be able to make full movements at the intersection of Coltsneck and Route thirty-three. The secondary access will be on Route thirty-three. It will only be able to have a right turn in, right turn out. That is, as dictated by the DOT with our conversations with the DOT. The the site will have loading only in the back portion of the building. You see on the hatch exhibit behind the proposed building, there is loading docks along the perimeter of the rear of the building. The loading will be screened from the streets by the shape of the building. There, we separated employee parking in the rear portion of the building. And we have ample parking in the front of the building for the retail stores. The applicant is providing one hundred and forty-one parking spaces on site with the required ADA handicap spaces spread throughout the property to ensure that there's handicap available for all locations of the development.
And that the number of parking spaces requires a waiver, right?
That is correct.
I mean, like, guys, come on, stop, just be honest and tell us what the circumstance is. You need one hundred and forty, one hundred and forty-four spaces, you have one hundred and forty-one. Like, I'm not understanding how you're going about this presentation. I mean, you're talking about parking, you need a variance and two waivers for parking. Are you, are you going to get to that at some point?
We planned on doing that, Mr. Kennel is the expert. I was just asking.
Yeah, but he's the site engineer. So he's not the traffic engineer, he's the site engineer. You designed the site. You designed the access points, the parking spaces, the parking space dimensions, the number of parking spaces. He's not going to testify to any of that?
We will, we will.
I mean, I just kind of feel like you guys are kind of glossing over this, and you're talking about parking as if it's no big deal. Yeah, we have one hundred and forty-one parking spaces, but you need one hundred and forty-four. Who, like, who's going to justify that? The traffic engineer?
We did intend to do it with the traffic engineer, but we could do it.
He's going to, he's going to justify the waiver.
We'll, we'll, we'll.
Okay, that's on you, but I'm just saying, I just feel like you guys should just be presenting this where when you're not compliant, you should be identifying that you're not compliant. But you're just glossing over it.
We didn't intend to be glossing over it at all.
Well, I mean, that's kind of how this is going. So I, I mean, I'm not saying that I have a huge issue with the project. But I'm starting to have an issue with how it's being presented, because I feel like you guys are kind of glossing over things that should be discussed as, so you're going to talk about how you're compliant on the buffer with the farm, but you're not going to talk about how you're not compliant with the buffer on the rest of it. Now you're going to talk that you have one hundred and forty-one parking spaces, but not that you're not compliant on the parking. It just seems to me that you're like glossing over the fact that you're not compliant in areas, and I feel like the board deserves the facts as we go through. So that's just my recommendation. It's your case, as I've said, but you know, the way it's going thus far, I have significant concerns about how it's being presented.
Well, let's. Points are made and no offense, it was meant to anyone. We had, we have a presentation, we'll accelerate those portions. So there's a one hundred and forty-one parking lot, there's one hundred and forty-one parking stalls. And it's my understanding that in the ordinance, in Howell Township's ordinances, there are different standards for shopping centers and for just retail buildings. We have one hundred and forty-one stalls where the if this were to be reviewed as a retail building, it would require one hundred and forty-four. We are asking for a waiver for those three, those three stalls. And the basis of the waiver is that there are multiple stores in the center. And the testimony that I thought would be appropriate to support that.
I appreciate that now.
Traffic engineer.
Since when does a traffic engineer present variance and waiver testimony? Ever?
Adequacy of parking.
Ever, come on, stop. I, like, you guys can present whatever you want, but I'm telling you that this is starting to become very concerning how this is being presented to me. And I'm going to say to the board that I would encourage you guys to dig deep into these letters, because I kind of feel like we're trying to gloss this over. And I, I feel like you guys should discuss an item, discuss where we are, discuss what you're proposing, discuss the variances or waivers that you need. But I have never, in my thirty years' experience, had a traffic engineer justify a parking waiver, but okay, you guys can do whatever you want.
I'm somewhat at a loss. Because I don't like to ever contradict anyone on the record, but the variance, the number of stalls is often described by the traffic expert, but Mr. Challoner, would you provide your comment on the waiver request, the three-stall waiver request? And your, your description of the basis for the granting of that relief?
Yes, when we prepared the application, the, the final, the final, or the final requirement of the proposed building required one hundred and forty-four parking spaces. The applicant is proposing one hundred and forty-one parking spaces in the Howell Township ordinance. It allows the applicant to seek a waiver if it's a shopping center, since some of the spaces will be overrun, or I should say, complement each other. So the applicant was seeking the waiver of three parking spaces. And basically, the waiver came about with the landscaping and some of the buffer requirements from the DEP. When we, when we got the buffer averaging plan back from the DEP, we lost three spaces, so the applicant seeking a waiver of those three spaces.
Are you going to talk about the variance needed for the location of spaces?
In the front setback, or in the buffer area in the, in the front, is that what?
I mean, no, along Coltsneck and Route thirty-three.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I mean about the front.
Yeah.
Yes, can do what you want. You ready for me to put that on the record? Okay.
Sure.
So the, when the site was originally laid out, the applicant, when we originally started this project in two thousand and nineteen on Coltsneck Road, the existing use across the street was a golf driver range designed to project. We, when we first came in with the Dollar General, the existing gas station was on the corner. We were were seeking to reconstruct the existing gas, or reconstruct the existing gas station as a Dollar General. When it became about that, we were going to have to be imposed the farm assessments, we decided to redesign the project. And to do a full-blown Dollar General with the associate retail space. And that was the presentation that was presented originally. When we applied to the town and we were deemed complete, the project across the street was approved by the zoning board for residential developments. The residential development imposed a fifty-foot buffer along Coltsneck Road and a fifty-foot buffer on the adjoining property to the, to the north, which is the farm, the farmland buffer. The property to the south of our property, which is an existing residential structure also requires a fifty-foot buffer. There's an existing residential house, although I think it's being converted to a shopping center. But it is an existing house today, so again, because of that existing structure, the applicant is also required to have a fifty-foot buffer along a portion of Route thirty-three. We are seeking a waiver from those two buffers, and in return of granting a waiver, the applicant has hired a landscape architect to enhance the buffer of the area that's there to build firms and streetscape along both those frontages. So the applicant is hoping to seek a waiver for both those frontages, both along Route thirty-three and Coltsneck Road. Eventually, the portion of Route thirty-three, if the corner ever gets developed the opposite of our property, it'll be commercial site that will no longer be required. And the property to the let me get the property to the the buffer that we're seeking on the adjoining property, if I can share this screen with you. It'll take a second to load up. I don't know why it's taking so long to load. Up there it goes. This is the grading and utility plan of the proposed project across the street on Coltsneck Road. And as soon as this PDF, which is a large PDF, loads on my computer, I'll show you how it, there it is. So on the bottom of the plan is, this is Route thirty-three where my cursor is running. On the left side of the exhibit is Coltsneck Road. You could see the existing gas station at the intersection of Coltsneck and Route thirty-three. An existing lot, seventy-seven oh one is this trapazoid property across the street from where we're seeking a waiver for the buffer. This is a large detention facility. There is going to be a pump station for a, for their sewer injection system. There's an infiltration basin. So the nearest residential development or nearest residential home or lot is over two hundred feet away from our property. So the applicant is seeking a waiver from the provided a buffer, even though.
It's a variance, not a waiver.
Or yes.
It's a variance, and that's not really what I was talking about. I was talking about section one eighty-eight dash seventy-two, seventy-eight point two, which does not allow off-street parking located fifty feet of any tract boundary. So that's separate from the buffer issue. That's a separate variance that you need.
Okay. All right, so I'll jump onto that. This is exhibit easier to see. This is the site plan exhibit in your packet. So the applicant is seeking a a variance to provide the the parking within fifty feet of the track boundary, which is along Colts Neck Road. Because of the large wetlands on the proper approximately. Sixty percent of the property is is wetlands. Most of our development is is confined to the southeast corner of our property. Uh due to the hardship to the wetlands, the applicant is seeking a way or variance to allow permit. Permit parking within the fifty foot of the proposed perimeter uh adjacent to the roadways.
So are you going to give the planning testimony necessary for that variance?
I I will. If um if Mr. Pape is looking for that at this time.
I think that I think it's the request theme, so let's let's present.
So the applicant, again, the property, let me. Uh the locker, just if I had the this exhibit. Uh this is this colored exhibit, which is the overall site plan, shows the entire portion of the property. You can see the hardship that the applicant is seeking. Um for the variance, there's a large portion of the property is being restricted. Um that we're going to put in conservation. Uh there there's a wetland that has been identified. Uh adjacent to the existing farm field, so all our property is being confined to the southeast corner of the property. The applicant feels that providing the the parking in the front of the property. Uh would be consistent with what was permitted. Uh for the quick check across the street and also the shopping center, so it would be keeping it with the neighborhood. Uh and also uh enhance the improvements for this. Changing, you know, the existing gas station and the existing farm field that's there today. Uh would enhance the township in terms of providing this development to go forward.
Mr. Challenger, if you if you could confirm that the intensity of this property is at twenty-three point seven percent total coverage. I made that as a statement.
That is correct.
As which is roughly one-third the intensity that the ordinance contemplated as being possible.
That is correct. That is correct. And the applicant is not seeking to develop anything in the in the northeast corner. If there was, even if the the portions that are in the northeast or northwest corner that are uplands, we're going to also provide that as a conservation estimate.
And the the landscape plan, which Ms. Kavaski will talk about is. If you could describe that in its dimension that is being offered and the fact that it has enhancements beyond that which the ordinance had. Required.
All right, hold on. You know, uh Mr. Pape, I don't think I have Julie's landscape plan in my.
So Eileen or Matt, if you could bring that up for us, I know that Ms. Kavaski loaded it in yesterday.
No, that's that's the Bryce Bennett landscape plan. It would be the one from Malou and Bauer.
Stu, is that in the site plan set or a separate submission?
It was a separate submission.
Yeah. Perhaps Julie, are you able to screen share it while Stuart is testifying?
I think we have it.
Fine, so. Stuart, if you could, I. The the actual elements of the landscaping will be presented by Ms. Kavaski, but if you could just. Identify the distance from the right-of-way to the parking. And identify the extent of the variance that is requested, the physical extent of the variance is requested.
Uh the yeah, the applicant, I believe, is providing parking within fifteen feet of the right-of-way or of the. Of the property line, which is the right-of-way and which is probably another fifteen feet from the curb line, so it'll be approximately. Uh thirty feet from the curb to the interior parking inside that curb line that will be a proposed sidewalk. And the remaining portion of it will be berman and landscaping along both frontages.
Thank you. Ms. Bean, is there anything further that you wish to hear from Mr. Challoner on that point?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Then what I'd ask is if we could, I think the last part of this, if we go back to your site plan, we could go back to the. The your site plan, I think that we we had done circulation, we're on circulation. I had a question that I didn't get to ask that. I'd like to plan to be up as I ask it. And the the question is, have you confirmed that all of the anticipated vehicle movements, including. The fire vehicles identified by Chief Lewis. The anticipated delivery and trash removal vehicles and other emergency vehicles. Can circulate around the site through all of the cartways that you've designed?
Yes. Yes, they're fully complying to the the loading of the vehicles that we're anticipating and the fire trucks that were. Given to us by the fire official.
Would you take us to the, would you take us to the location of the signage? And describe the relief that is requested for signage?
Mr. Challoner, real quick, to the point of the vehicle circulation, one of the condition, or. One of the technical comments is to provide a circulation plan. Will you provide a circulation plan for fire truck? Trash truck and then the largest delivery truck?
Yes, we have a traffic plan that we submitted to the fire official. I'll forward that to you also.
Okay, thank you.
Uh the applicant is seeking two signs along the frontage of Route thirty-three. The major sign is at the intersection of Route thirty-three and Colts Neck Road and it's identified. Uh on the site plan exhibit being presented, it's just outside the side triangle. The secondary sign um is at the intersection of the ingress and egress off of Route thirty-three. It's approximately twenty feet setback from the uh from the road. Uh they will meet the setback requirements. Uh but the township only permits one sign along the frontage. But because of the uh the length of of the distance from where the signage at the intersection and the location of the driveway, approximately. Three to three hundred feet from the intersection, the applicant is seeking a secondary sign to identify the entrance.
Those, the architecture, the archi, the design of those signs. The location are shown on your plans, but the design will be presented by Mr. Tester, the architect for the building and the signs.
That's correct. The the signs were prepared in conjunction with the building facade and he'll he'll provide testimony for that.
Going to ask if you could. The trash enclosure, if you could confirm the location of the trash enclosure and the construction materials for that enclosure.
Uh the trash enclosure is located on the access drive off of Colts Neck Road. They'll be able to pull in, they'll have a either a front. Excuse me, or rear loading, uh it's adjacent to basin number two. Uh it is going to be constructed of concrete masonry block with fencing fencing in the front of it. Uh it'll be complimentary to the proposed building.
And I'm going to ask if you would advise the board that you have. Um received the staff reports that were generated by the boards professionals. That you've had the opportunity to go over the staff reports with Mr. Rizzo and Ms. The with CME report with Ms. Rizzo and. Uh Mr. Rizzo and Ms. Newman, and if you would advise the board that you can and you will comply with the outstanding. Technical requirements that appear in those reports.
Yes, that's correct. We'll be fully compliant.
Mr. Chair and Board members, I have nothing further on direct of Mr. Challoner. He is available to you and your professionals for further examination.
Mr. Challoner, on the northwest side of the building, is that two-way traffic going around the building permitted?
Uh yes, it's two-way traffic around the entire building. The hatchet in that area, if it's confused and the hatchet is only because it's.
The buffer decreased, right?
That's correct, yes.
Um, members of the board, any questions for Mr. Challoner on engineering? Jan or Jordan, if you have anything as well?
Yes, I have a few. You want to go, John?
No, I'm good.
Okay, I have a few questions. As um the condition of an approval, would you be consolidating the two lots?
Oh, yes, yes. They were acquired at separate times, but the intention is for them to function as one and a merger deed would be granted.
And then you'll comply with all of the um standards of performance in the ordinance, such as noise, glare, pollutants, et cetera.
Affirmatively on the record, yes.
Mr. Challenger, you mentioned that the ID sign at the intersection of Colts Neck Road. And thirty-three is outside of the site triangle. Um I don't think I see it on your plan now. Is it? Is the site triangle encroached into the property or will you be adding it on the future revision?
Uh well, the eight, the Astro site triangle does not encroach into the site. Um however, if the. If you uh you indicated additional site, we could provide it. Uh but no, the the Astro requirements do not encroach into the property.
Okay. And did you mention the illumination of the signs?
Uh oh, I I I thought Mr. Tester would testify. He he prepared exhibits for the signs. The signs are going to be, the 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 main sign is illuminated. Uh I I'm not quite sure about the secondary sign.
Yeah, but I think Mr. Tester can go through it in 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 good detail.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question right now is with with regard to wetlands. Can you just repeat, did you receive your LOI and have you submitted for your transitionary waiver or is is that pending?
So the LOI has been received. We 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 actually received that before we put pen to paper. Um and then we have submitted for stone water discharge permit and a buffer averaging. Plan and we just recently resubmitted that, Jordan, because of the revised basin designs. Uh originally, they were the infiltration basins and since we changed them. Um the D E P just recently received the revised plans, just like you have.
Okay, thank you. I'm set for now.
Hey, um Steve, do we want to open up to the public for each individual professional? So this would be open into the public for engineering um questions only.
It's really up to you, Chairman. I mean, uh sometimes it's helpful to have all of the applicant's case put in. To avoid the public asking the engineer questions that are more suited to the landscape architect, et cetera. But it's entirely up to how you'd like to run the meeting, whether you'd like.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a good idea. Let let's let's run through it and then at the end we'll take questions so there are all and. Um there won't be any confusion. So Ken, um I guess if that concludes, Mr. Challoners, we can move on to your your next professional.
Thank you. The next person to testify is Scott Kennel, the our traffic expert. And Scott, when we were here on July, June, did you, we placed your credentials on the record that evening?
I don't recall. Again, doing three hearings a week, I I.
Uh Mr. Kennel's testimony, we'll we'll begin with Mr. Kennel. Um placing his credentials on the record in an abundance of caution. Uh Mr. Kennel, would you share your. Uh your credentials as a traffic expert with the board and the public?
Should I be sworn in first?
Okay, Mr. Kennel, do you swear affirm that the testimony you provided before the board this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much.
Again, it's Scott Kennel, K E N N E L. I'm with McDonough and Ray Associates located at fourteen thirty-one Lakewood Road, Manasquan. I'm a principal with McDonough and Ray Associates. I have over thirty-five years of traffic transportation. Planning experience throughout New Jersey. I testified before this board as well as the zoning board on many occasions. And I testified on over a thousand applications in a hundred municipalities. Throughout New Jersey, and I've also been qualified by New Jersey Superior Court on three land use matters as a traffic expert.
Uh Mr. Kennel will accept your credentials as a traffic engineer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This Mr. Kennel, I'm going to ask if you initially, if you could just do an overview and and and. Um describe the location of the driveways and confirm from a traffic expert. That the your opinion about the adequacy and safety of the driveway locations.
Yes, I'd be glad to. Uh again, we've been in communications with NJ DOT for over two years on this matter. Uh with our first meeting in June of twenty nineteen and then we met again on June eleven, twenty twenty. And discussed the the access plan that's been presented. Um as you're aware of, the current site now has four curb cuts along Route thirty-three. Uh with the driveways for the gas station. That are not compliant with their design standards, where they require driveways to be a minimum of a hundred feet. From a signalized intersection. The driveway on Colts Neck Road is also approximately a hundred feet from Route thirty-three. But with the proposed plan, we we're going to provide a separation of in excess of four hundred feet for the right-in, right-out. Uh driveway to Route thirty-three. At that location, we have more than adequate site distance. We see the recommended standards. We're also, you take into consideration just to the west of us is the. Full movement driveway for the Equestria Commercial Development and we have, we're spaced approximately three hundred feet from that location. Uh as far as the Colts Neck Road driveway, we've located that as far north as possible, approximately two hundred and fifty feet from. Route thirty-three, so to maximize the spacing from the signalized intersection, both along Route thirty-three and Colts Neck Road. We have made, filed an application with NJ DOT in March of this year. That application also included, or submission also included, an NJ DOT lock consolidation application. So as much as. We've identified with with this application will be consolidating lots, we've also requested the same from NJ DOT in accordance with their requirements.
Before you go to the next topic, would it be your professional opinion that the reduction in the number of of driveways and the relocation of the driveways. Creates an adequate a means of ingress and egress and a safer means of ingress and egress to the site?
It it's my expert opinion that the access plan for this site. Is far superior than what exists with the two prior uses and meets and exceeds the requirements of the NJ DOT uh. Design standards. So in my opinion, it would operate safely and efficiently.
Going to ask if you could talk about onsite circulation. Stuart Challoner indicated that he designed this to accommodate all of the anticipated vehicles. We ask that you confirm that. Would you share your professional opinion as to the adequacy of the driveways? For all of the anticipated vehicle movements and those would be the fire trucks, the emergency vehicles, the delivery vehicles. The trash removal vehicles as well as the customers and employees.
Yes, I have reviewed the plan for a, from a circulation standpoint, as it relates to passenger vehicles, as well as the large wheelbase vehicles. Um including delivery. Uh trash as well as. Um fire emergency vehicles and found that this site has been designed to accommodate. The vehicles that anticipate this to serve this site. A-again with the two-way aisles throughout the site around around the perimeter of the building. Provide optimizes access uh throughout the site into the two access points.
Going to ask if you would comment on the comment as to the adequacy of the loading areas. That Mr. Challoner identified for the board.
Yes, it's my opinion that uh we have adequate loading zones that still permit. Vehicle passage behind those loading zones throughout the rear of the site. Which will predominantly be used by employees and service vehicles. Uh it's anticipated that the. Uh, it's anticipated that the passenger vehicles or customers would generally be uh, within the parking areas fronting Colts neck road and Route thirty-three.
With regard to the parking, there are two elements of the parking that I asked that you speak to. And one is the um, distribution of the parking throughout the site. Would you share, do you have an opinion as to whether the distribution of the parking provides parking for all of the anticipated um, retail customers?
Yes, given the layout of the uh, of the site, the parking is well distributed um, adjacent to, I'll say, all the storefronts that we have along Route thirty-three and as well as along Colts neck road. So the, the parking is well distributed with the anchor being the the corner piece of the building, so they have more than adequate parking at that location. As far as the request for a waiver on the parking supply, the ordinance requires a hundred and forty-four parking spaces at a rate of five point five. We're providing a hundred and forty-one spaces at a parking rate of five point four, in my opinion, de minimis. Uh, the Institute of Transportation Engineers and Urban Land Institute recommend a parking ratio of four point five for a retail center similar to one proposed, which would yield a demand of, say, a hundred and seventeen vehicles, where we have a hundred and forty-one. I think it's also important to recognize that the anchor, uh, the Dollar General IT has extensive parking data for those types of stores, a variety uh, Dollar General type stores, where their research shows that the parking demand is generally at a rate of two point oh vehicles per one thousand square feet, or in other words, nineteen to twenty parking spaces, where we've parked it at fifty parking spaces for the Dollar General store. Um, so taking all that into consideration and, and the fact we're going to have multiple tenants, i- it's my opinion, expert opinion, that the hundred and forty-one parking spaces will be more than adequate to serve the anticipated demand.
So I thank you. Mr. Mr. Kennel, I have nothing further on direct. I know that you have worked extensively with this application with Mr. Challoner and with the DOT. Is there anything that you feel needs to be added before we conclude your testimony?
Yeah, I would just like to briefly touch on the level of service or the operational characteristics of the driveways as presented in the traffic impact statement dated December three, twenty twenty by my office. And as it relates to the, the Route thirty-three driveway, it, our analysis indicated it's projected to operate at level service C, which again, the, the desirable level service is C to D, and we're providing level service C for the morning peak hour and the P M peak hour. Whereas the Colts neck road driveway will operate level service A. And it's important to recognize that when we did our analysis, we considered background traffic growth. We considered the full occupancy of the Toll Brothers Regency Development to the east, full occupancy of the Cayo Nanian Development and the Old Farmer Brown Site, and also considered the seven thousand square foot retail development uh, proposed for the southwest quadrant of Route thirty-three and Colts neck road. So we took all of that into consideration when we evaluated the uh, the driveway serving this site and found that they'll operate at um, very good levels of service.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have nothing further of Mr. Kennel, and he's now available to you and your professionals.
Thank you very much. Um, I guess I'll open it up to the professionals first. Jordan, Jen, do you have anything?
I would defer it, Jordan, on this.
I, I do not have any questions for Mr. Kennel. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any questions for Mr. Kennel? Okeydoke.
Okay. Seeing none, Mr. Pape, proceed.
Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Kennel. The, Julie Kobeski is a, the landscape architect who has um, come on board to prepare the landscape plan around the perimeter. And I'm going to ask that, oh, Julie, take a few moments to share all of her credentials with you. We'll, I think we'll be requalifying her. Let, let's place her under oath, and we'll go through her qualifications and present the enhanced landscape plan to the board.
Ms. Kobeski, please raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony provided before the board this evening will be the truth? You're mute, you're, we, we can't hear you, Ms. Kobeski. You're not muted, but we can't hear you.
We heard you before, so we know that it works.
Hear me now?
Yeah, we hear you now. Yes.
Happened last time. I had to mute, unmute. Okay.
Maybe, maybe if you're, oh, see, you're, you're going in and out. I think you're too far away from the microphone.
Oh.
I- is this better at all?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Kobeski, please share with the board your education and your professional credentials.
I am a two thousand and four graduate of Penn State University, where I received a Bachelor of Landscape Architecture degree. I've been working at the firm of Malilow Bauer Carmen since two thousand and four, and I currently hold the position of associate within the firm. I am licensed within the state of New Jersey, and I've appeared before a, a number of boards within the state.
And is your license in good standing as of this date?
Yeah.
Is the plan that you're about to present, the plan that you designed?
Yes.
Great. May I ask that the board allow Ms. Kobeski to testify as a landscape expert?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kobeski, if you could introduce to us your exhibit, would, bring it up and describe it. Take us through the design.
Everybody can see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, so in developing the landscape plan for the Route thirty-three and Colts neck road buffer areas, we drew from the successfully implemented landscape designs of the surrounding developments. We also consulted with Miss Spiro um, directly with the overall goal of creating a complete, effective, and attractive buffer within the areas that were available to us. So, beginning along the Route thirty-three buffer, we are showing three-foot-high raised berms planted with multi-stemmed ornamental trees um, along the parking areas to provide filtered views into the site while concealing the parking from the roadway. Between the berms, we've included um, evergreen shrubs and flowering perennials to both enhance the buffer um, and create more interest, and also complete the four-season screening of the parking um, along the Route thirty-three uh, frontage. Shade trees are planted at fifty to sixty-five feet on center, and they continue along the Route thirty-three buffer um, in front of, of the basin area, where we've also included a staggered row of native shrubs um, to help create more visual interest there and to, to help buffer the um, the fencing quarter, the basin area. We've also included at the uh, Route thirty-three entrance into the site, we've included flowering ornamental trees and perennials, along with ornamental grasses and low shrubs to both enhance the project signage within that area and to really create an attractive sense of arrival at that entry point. Moving along to the Colts neck road buffer, here we've created um, a bit more of a traditional buffer within the space that we had available. We've included alternating evergreen trees and evergreen shrubs planted along the rolling slope of that buffer area. Um, the evergreen plantings are enhanced by pockets of low shrubs and flowering perennials. And street trees are again included uh, at, at a spacing of fifty feet on center along the, the Colts neck road frontage. We feel that this creates a really effective, complete and attractive buffer for um, the future residential community across Colts neck road. And again, at that entrance from Colts neck road, we've included flowering trees and some um, flowering perennials and low shrubs to create a sense of arrival. Finally, at the intersection of Colts neck roads um, and Route thirty-three, we've included rolling bedlines with a mixture of ornamental and shade trees. Low, low shrubs and flowering perennials, and also some, some higher shrubs to uh, buffer some of the parking to really create a garden-like um, theme within the, the intersection, and also to enhance the project signage um, that will be presented shortly. So in, in general, um, the plant selections that we made were determined through coordination with Miss Spiro and the landscape design for the remainder of the site, and we placed a strong focus on deer-resistant planting. And we feel that the uh, the result is an effective and complete buffer um, that enhances the overall development.
I thank you for your presentation. Uh, um, I think that you, you stated it, but the, the actual choice of plant material, would you confirm that you did work directly with Miss Spiro and followed her guidance on plant choices?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair and Board members, I have nothing further of Ms. Kobeski. We would be, um, she is available for examination, and we would be most interested in any further comments that Miss Spiro has on this landscaping element.
Thank you. Uh, Sherry, do you have anything?
Yeah, I, I don't have anything further. I mean, you know, um, they're great to work with, and you know, she really did what we were looking for, so it's a, you know, a great buffer in the area that she had to work with. So um, yeah, I, I do like the final, final design was good.
Great. Board members, any questions, comments? Moving right along, Mr. Pape.
Okay, thank you. Our final professional witness this evening is Michael Testa. Michael Test is the architect who prepared the plans for the building and the signage. Ms. Kobeski, thank you for your testimony, and Mr. Testa, if you could join us, and we'll ask that Mr. Test to be sworn. We'll make certain that the record has his credentials shared uh, this evening.
Mr. Testa, please raise your right hand. Mr. Testa, do you swear affirm that the testimony provided before the board this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Testa, please take a few moments to share with all of us your education and your professional background.
Yeah, so I'm a graduate, graduate of New Jersey Institute of Technology, nineteen ninety-one, Bachelor of Architecture, Licensed Architect in the state of New Jersey since nineteen ninety-six and good standing. Um, member of the American Institute of Architects, National Council Architectural Boards, uh, testified multiple um, multiple patients around the state, and the principal architect at the firm, Michael V. Test, Architect, Manalapan, New Jersey.
Mr. Chair, acceptable to testify as an architect this evening?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Testa, I'm going to ask if you could, in a narrative fashion, if you could take us through the elements of the building's design. Most important is to point out the um, the methods that you use to be compliant with standards of Howell Township uh, architecture. And if you, after just taking us through the building, if you then take us to the signs that were so designed, please make certain to discuss the lighting of those signs, as that question remains unanswered. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, I'd like to share my screen right now. Pull up the floor plan exhibits. Um, okay. The drawing we have in front of us is our floor plan, P B one, which shows the building that uh, is indicated on Mr. Challoner's site plan. The Route thirty-three corridor is at the bottom of the plan, and the Colts neck road is along the right-hand plan. You can see the articulation, the spaces where it's broken into multiple smaller tenant spaces from left to right along Route thirty-three with the anchor tenant, approximately ninety-one hundred square feet at the right-hand corner. And as we turn the corner down Colts neck road, there are three more retail spaces along um, that streetscape. The building facade, I would actually probably jump over to a rendering to help the board see that better. Um, with the design of the exterior of the building, we try to keep in um, keep in, in accordance with Howell's complex architectural standards, and those complex standards basically take into account the materials, the durability of those materials, the mixture, and the articulation of the facade. Our initial design, uh, we had some comments from Miss Bean, and we took those comments, went back, and we feel further articulated the other sides of the building that were not exposed to the street. So at the top of this image here, which is a two-dimensional color rendering, the top image is your street view, root, I'm sorry, your street view from Route thirty-three. As you can see, the street view has multiple parapet heights with the highest, highest point at both of the corners, about thirty-two feet, nine and a half inches. It drops down to twenty, it drops, jumps back up to twenty-two, and that continues around both streets uh, scapes along the two main roads. There are a blend of architectural materials. We have a smooth base masonry units on the bottom, cultured stone pilasters, uh, brick wolverine here up to the top of the ten-foot-high storefront, and then a uh, scored stucco finish along the top edge. There is accent, um, accented trim elements along the top of the pyramid, and also along the architectural feature treatments along the edges that help break up the facade as well. Uh, we do have some expanses of wall area that we tried to take those elements and bring them across to fill that wall space and break up that wall surface. The right elevation, which is on the left side middle here, is the Colts neck elevation. Again, a continuation of all the same materials that is uh, being brought around the streetscape and around the, the left side of the building and the rear of the building. We're keeping the same materials, the same treatments um, that we're mixing uh, brick, cultured stones, smooth face C M U, stucco, and standing seam mill roof. The, the building materials are durable, and we feel that um, enhance the area as far as its appearance. I'd like to pull up a image we have for let me see where that is. Oh, it's right here. Sorry about that. And then we prepared a signage um, exhibit that shows the approximate locations of each of the tenant signs. The anchor tenant sign, that's along Route thirty-three corridor. The middle left is showing you along the Colts neck corridor with potential tenant signage. We indicate the areas, the signs will be illuminated channel letters, not to exceed the square feet based upon the township's ordinance, and no signage along the rear and the left side of the building and rights, uh, left side of the building. Now, I also want to jump back to the monument signs that we have on sheet P B two. As Mr. Challon indicated, there are two monument signs, a larger one and a small one. Both signs will be illuminated from a ground-up light. They will not be internally lit, and they will be consistent with the building materials, two different colors, smooth base, masonry, decorative trim at the top and base of the, uh, of the signs. The larger sign is twelve feet tall by six feet wide, and the secondary sign is five feet tall by six feet wide. And that would be the, conclude my overview of the of our, of our building design.
I think that it was, we could see a color scheme, but if you could put into words the color scheme that's been employed.
Color scheme is basically a lot of earth tones. As you can see, there's, there's a wooded area behind us that we're going to be maintaining, so we wanted to maintain that earth uh, tone. I think it blends well with other building in the area, the retail buildings in the area. And it's um, it's, you know, it has a nice visual appearance as we drive by along Route thirty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Testa. Mr. Chair and Board members, I have nothing further of Mr. Testa. He is available to you and your professionals for examination.
Thank you. I'll open it up to any questions or comments.
So, Mr. Chair, can I just jump in for quite a second on the signage? I do agree with Mr. Testa. He's worked with my office on the architecture, and I do think he's done a good job with respect to the, you know, facing all four facades, but the signage does require relief, correct?
This, two signs.
Well, the square footage of the sign has to be twelve by three or four by ten, and you're at twelve by six. So that requires relief for the size of the sign, correct? I'm not opining that I don't agree with it. I'm just asking whether or not you need relief.
Yeah, Ms. Ms. Bean, I missed that. I, I did, I thought that we had gotten the sign to the right size, but if, if, if this size sign does require relief, we, we do request relief for that, the corner sign.
So the, the sign requirements under section two fifty-six, five A four talks about monument signs, which this is. They shall not be greater than twelve by three or four by ten. So the twelve by six sign would require relief So the 12 by 6 sign would require relief by three feet, I guess, wide, correct? Because you're at 12 high by 3, by 6 wide, I'm guessing based on what I'm looking at.
Right. Mr. Testa can confirm, please?
Yes, it's 6 feet wide, full sign by 12 feet high, and it exceeds the allowable by 3 feet in width.
Right, and then the other is, or 4 by 10, which is 40 feet, but they're 5 by 6, which is 30 feet, so while technically they're wider, they're not higher. So I don't take exception to the relief requested, but I would say you're gonna landscape around the base of those signs, correct? Because that is required as well.
All right, we bet up to Ms. Malilov to come up with a statement.
Ms. Kobeski, if you would rejoin us and confirm that your plan does include landscaping along the base of both of these signs.
Yes, we do include landscaping at the base of all the signs.
And Sherry, you're good with the landscaping around the signage? So, yeah, so they would need variance for the, the size of the sign, but they wouldn't need a variance for the landscaping around the perimeter. So, but that's all I have to say. And I will say, Mr. Testa, I do appreciate the work that your office has done with my office to get the architecture to, where we would actually like it, like to see it around all four sides of the building. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your input.
I have a question, and I'm not sure, it's probably a combo question for Mr. Testa and Mr. Challoner. Being, being that the site is a current gas station, has been so for quite a long time, and there are known groundwater contamination issues on the site. Will, will a vapor barrier be installed as part of the construction of this building?
Moisture barrier is typically required through the slab. I don't know what is in this, in this company ground that may constitute that, but whatever is required by code, we would be applying to the construction of the building when, if the board would bring so.
I, I'm looking at it for more of, of what's known on the site from, from a vapor intrusion standpoint, being that there's contamination from the, the use of the underground storage tanks and the potential for vapor intrusion into this building. I, I would just recommend it be discussed that a vapor barrier be installed in this building.
Okay, thank you.
Preventative measure.
Mr. Testa, can you clarify for me, are you proposing wall signs along the building? I feel like I've seen it on one exhibit, and then the other exhibit didn't have them.
Yeah, let me just show you the signage exhibit is right here. So you see the red text along here with each of the, the wall-mounted internally illuminated signs on the two streetscapes, one on Route 33, which is the upper drawing. In the middle left is the Colts Neck Road elevation.
Okay. Jen, are you considering these signs in the total quantity?
The, what I was talking about was more the monument signs are allowed to because they're on a corner. We really didn't review the, the wall-mounted signs, was that on the architectural plans?
I don't think it was previously submitted that way.
That's what I'm saying, like, I don't, I, we did not receive plans that had those wall-mounted signs. So I would recommend that, that be submitted and we review it. And in the event that it's, you know, non-compliant, you can either choose to go through that process separately or come back to the board, should that be necessary.
We can, on the record, state, because this was discussed with the applicant and the architect, it is the intention of those signs to be compliant with the ordinance.
So we, we could defer that to Mr. Howard to approve the signs, you know, after the, like, should the board act favorably and get through resolution compliance, we could defer to Mr. Howard, and should there be an issue, you'd have to come back for approval at some point.
And Chairman, through offline communication with my client, who obviously is not with me, but through a communication with him, I asked how he felt about the installation of the vapor barrier as you've suggested, and he is agreeable to installing that as an element of the, the building.
Great.
So just to, just so the record is clear, the wall-mounted signs are not part of this application because they weren't shown on the plans that were reviewed by the board's professionals. But to the extent that those wall signs are completely conforming, they would be able to get a zoning permit. And if they're non-compliant, they would have to come back to this board for some type of relief.
Understood, and you can add to it, sir, that the commitment to the style of signage, the internally illuminated channel letters is a commitment to which we are comfortable being bound.
Very good. Are there any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, Bill.
I was wondering about the other tenant, do you have any idea who the other?
I'm sorry, sir.
Do you think I bought that?
Jen, you're not on mute.
Yeah, I, I was wondering about, do we have any idea who the other tenants are gonna be? Or what type of tenants?
I, Mr. Bruce Olofsky is with us. If we could open his mic, we can ask him. I do not know if there are other tenants in hand. Mr. Bruce Olofsky is your, is the principal, if we could have him sworn, and then Felix will ask that you address that.
Mr. Bruce Olofsky, do you swear from that any testimony provided before the board this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much.
And Felix Bruce Olofsky is the managing member and principal of your applicant. Felix, any other tenants that are signed for the center?
Not at this moment. We are marketing it, but as of right now, we don't have anybody else.
For the record, to all board members, we're all, Dollar General is the anchor about, about which the center was designed, and they, we began with them. But there is a caution about going out and bringing in other tenants until we have this board's permission. We've, we have found that when tenants say, I've signed up as a tenant, and they go and tell the town, before the town has given the approval, it doesn't have a good effect on this process.
Understood. All right, are there any other questions? Mr. Pape, do you have anyone else?
No, Mr. Chair, that is your applicant's direct presentation. And I, before we conclude, I would only ask for about 90 seconds to do a summation.
Sure, yeah, at this time, Steve, I'm gonna open it up to the public. I see there's a handful of people on. So Eileen, if you could open it up, if anyone does have questions on this application or comments, please feel free to use the raise your hand feature, give it about a minute. And if none, we'll close that portion.
Yes, we'll open to the public.
Chairman, do you want to use this opportunity to let the public both ask questions and offer comment?
Yes, please. Yeah, we're gonna be doing that.
There is currently no one raising their hand.
Okay, I will close the public portion. And Mr. Pape, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. I know that everyone was paying attention to all of the witnesses. We have a gas station that's been there for quite some time, operating 24/7, and we have a farm stand that has been inactive for the past year. These, these two facilities have none of the modern protections that are being offered. The stormwater protection and the protection of the, of the wetlands is nonexistent. The request that's being made of the board is a, is a, is a use of the property that is consistent with your ordinance. It does require the variance and waiver relief that's now part of the record. But significantly, it's 23.9% coverage, where the ordinance contemplates 70%. And the relief that is requested has been, has been justified by the applicant with the superior landscaping plan, the berming within that landscaping plan, and the architectural treatment of the building that we're very pleased to hear Ms. Bean compliment. For all of the reasons that are placed before the board, we ask that the board consider favorably the preliminary and final site plan approval. The applicant will honor all the commitments that are made part of the record this evening and all the commitments that have been made to the professionals as we approached the board before coming here.
Thank you, Mr. Pape. And I, and I just want to chime in to, when, when Mr. Pape came to the Environmental Commission, we, we had a chance, twice, we had a chance to review. I do want to put on the record that the site does have a licensed site remediation professional, an LSRP retained, and is currently in compliance with, with all document submittals, and is, will be doing so going forward as well, so we were comfortable with that.
Thank you.
So that being said, at this time, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Casper, thank you. Do I have a second? Anyone?
I'll second it.
Mr. Bivai, second, thank you. Eileen, roll call, please.
Or Mr. Bivai?
Yes.
Mr. Dorado, did you certify?
No.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
You're on mute, Joe.
No.
And Chairman Hauser?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, all board members, thank you for listening, thank you for your careful deliberation. On behalf of Mr. Bruce Olofsky and his family and all of the witnesses who testified, we thank you and good night.
Thank you, Mr. Pape, thank you very much. Okay. That was the last application for this evening. Paul, do we have a master plan update?
Nothing right now. Yeah, I mean, unless Jen has something.
So we have the conservation, the draft conservation element, and a 90% flange element ready to go to the, to the subcommittee for review. The conservation element is still in process because, you know, we're trying to wait for school to get back in session before we start doing real traffic counts, etc. So that's gonna be a little bit delayed, but the other two are ready to go back to the subcommittee for their review. So we're chugging along.
I have to put you on the spot, and I know I've asked this question again, but it's, before, I mean, and it's coming from the Environmental Commission. Will the ERI be approved by the end of 2021?
Absolutely, so that's included in that conservation element, it's incorporated into it, and then we've included as a addendum to that conservation element, so the answer to that is yes.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Steve, is there any reason to go into executive session?
Not, not that I'm aware of, Chairman.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'm moved.
So moved, do I have a second?
Second.
So moved. All right, thank you, thank you, everybody, stay safe.
Good night.
See you guys at the end of August.
Good night.
Good night, have a great summer.